We will call the meeting to order, the first order of business is a pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Review and approve the minutes of March fifth. Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's everybody. Members' reports, this is our business.
Just no conditions, like a, a parking lot hill is just full of poles and starting to get to a point where I can write cards. So I can't be the only one like that. Imagine you've got a, got a work to do on our turf first.
Did you know, Ron, all set with you? Chuckie, hold on. Jeff, all set.
All, and. So we'll dive right into the town manager's report. All right, the wastewater grants funds have been resorted from the last meeting and the meeting before, I guess. We had talked about the paving project at the sewer plant. The cost estimate came in for Rebecca Street Pump Station as thirty-three, thirty-eight thousand. So I have given them to go ahead and put the spec and bid it out. Then we can trust the paving after that. That should put us in a good position to likely get both projects done there. I issued a legal services RFP without your approval on Monday. We, we got a notification from our law firm that people are leaving there, like leaving the Titanic. And so they're dropping clients that can't keep up with the larger clients in the government department. So I have issued that and I direct mailed, I think, ten or twelve municipal specialized firms. So I will keep you posted. We do have council of record through April. And then I think the first meeting in May is when I have RFPs coming to this board to make a decision. So we'll see, we were getting a very good deal with a good representation. And it's gonna cost more on the hours, unfortunately there, but it is what it is. The Taxi Link construction project over the airport, that's gonna be beginning with May, a forty-five day construction window. Right now, we're working with hanger owners on a first come, first served basis to provide them alternate storage. For those hangers affected, they, they need to pull their aircraft out if they want access to them. And so reach out to Bruce at the airport or me. If you're looking for the alternate arrangements, preferably to Bruce, but also if you're looking to pave up to your hanger. Using the contract that we're using, it'll be completely separate on a different contract. But they may provide savings there and ultimately provide us with a better finished product, uh, product, so. That's there. The upcoming newsletter, about to do at the end of the month already. So that'll blow up probably the second week of April. If anybody has anything to submit there, please let me know. Uh, the emergency management talk, I went down to York County last week to talk about December twenty twenty-three flooding and the lessons learned here. It was over two hours and there were a couple dozen people that came. Fire chiefs, police chiefs, EMA people, county city managers, select board members. They picked us up in reports on the main monitoring. And that was when Todd was featured about the after the fact and of emergencies being local and non-local. And, and largely the lack of responsiveness and interagency cooperation. So it was an interesting time to say the least, but I spent the day down there last week, the afternoon down there last week. Firewall upgrade here was completed last Thursday into Friday. We had some pickups, so I appreciate folks bearing with us there. We couldn't operate without internet or phones. Potential for parking ride, talked about this at Uzul historical last meeting. I did end up submitting those plans this afternoon to DOT, so they'll be able to pull together a proposal for presentation to the property that was there. That's what Parker Ride proposed at the backside of that lot. That is not going to involve municipal investment if it moves through. It would be something between DOT and the owners, where there's facilitators. You're welcome, Pat. I'm waiting for, I have elected select board members in there, but we also list the school board members. So once we have a complete school board representation, then I will update that and hopefully get those printed tomorrow. The Route Eight Intersection Project, we had a meeting with DOT this afternoon. That seems to be moving along well. The state will cover the project at sixty percent, we'll be responsible for forty. So all in estimate local shares fifty-three thousand. If everything goes well, we're looking to get this to construction. So that will get ahead of what the state is planning for Route Two construction this summer. So we're a positive hopeful there. Julie Morrison, she's the town clerk holding on role, who works four day work, we live there. And has been willing to give up Fridays to help us out here. So she's providing us with willing to relieve flexibility in the office while we're running, she won't even. So far, so good. She's trained on everything that we do here. And so that's due to benefit a lot of industries that customize, where they go for this, what they do for that, that we're dealing with. To get our learning, but an amazing start there. The community service, they sign up, that's for people regardless of age, income or whatnot, as long as you live within SAD fifty-four. There are projects they can help you with, kids from high school, so cleaning, writing, staff, you know, things like that. There's a QR code available, you can sign up online, there's a page in this live report. And it's on Facebook too, so you just give the town office phone, we'll take care of that. The baseball softball team all sign up, those are open now, Cal Ripken signs up here, people rep. But that is live, that's when it goes out pretty early in the month. I'll be away on Friday for the seventy-year-old managers interchange, this one in March, June, or in August. And this one's like the end of this venue, or from Friday. Advisory committee will meet on Tuesday the twenty-fifth, they haven't met for a while. But they're going to consider a facade three program for a local cheese area, they'll be open to tasting it. So an interesting investment proposal there. And then your regular board meetings are as they are. The planning board did start to make headway on what they would like to see with subdivision ordinance, you know, continue that at their next meeting. Two other things, I hope, is to, and that is the large apartment building on Main Street near the Renteram. There's been a continued influx of dog traffic, leased, not leased, cleaned up after, not cleaned up after. And complete non responsiveness from the tenants and the landlord there. So I reached out to the state back in October with an issue about, you know, new dogs being obstinate to them being cyclos. They thought they had known it then, but the issue continues. And so anyway, I reached back out to them and they are working between the agencies and legal to figure out how they can do this. But I was supposed to tell them, say, we need something to keep in it for the people there that don't respect other people's property. And the last thing is a comprehensive plan, our comprehensive plan, which is your path to the future. It's generally done every ten to twelve years, but we consider current. It's required for some grants, obviously I've worked to avoid those because our plan was last updated in nineteen ninety-seven. Katie Cog asked if we wanted to be a part of the grant application. We did the revitalization plan, right? And that was halfway there. This is a bigger picture, it's statutorily required. Katie Cog asked us if we wanted to put in a grant to try to complete comprehensive plan. I said, sure, let's go ahead. We were one of thirty thousand dollars earlier today to cover that full expense. So I told them I didn't want to start it now, I did want to start it this summer. So September is the start date, hopefully for that. It will be a committee-driven plan where we'll look at the nineteen ninety-seven plan. And then move it forward by section, this spelled out the state law what sections have to be and how you address them. And then now vote voters is when that's done for acceptance or consideration. So I did post the committee online today and I will push out our next newsletter to say, hey, we're interested in this. You know, this, we could use an existing committee like this or this, like the planning board or. You just need a good cross-section of the community, obviously don't want too many, but I think if we can get seven, that would be great. Obviously, people will have vested interests, you need all pockets of your community engaged, so hopefully we will get there. There are quite a few more things that came through this afternoon, none of them insensitive necessarily. Waste management paid their February dues today, and their numbers ready, it'll be in the next report.
Thank you. Discussion action on March nineteenth, general warrant number six.
I move to approve general warrant number six in the amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred ninety dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second, motion second, any discussion?
What did we have engineered to the ten thousand? What they working on?
They are working on the environmental assessment for Bigelow Hill Paving Project. They're working on the.
Engineers get paid so much money for it.
Well, it's good that it's all great. Right, yeah, they're working on the.
Intersection.
Intersection project up there, and there's one more thing they're working on.
Probably the, uh, hill project.
Oh, can't remember. There's a third one anyway. This, I have two of them are hot and one is this project up here.
And Stanley's, the, is that our porta potties?
Stanley's is four hundred dollars worth of porta potties and the rest of it's sludge hall and tomatoes.
Zoom bean.
That is the library, that's their good stock summary per trapper.
I don't know. And I do have to question, I wonder.
Okay, anything else on that?
Seeing none, all those in favor? To everybody? Number seven, discussion action on March nineteenth, airfall and performance number two.
I move to approve number three in the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred, seventy-five dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second, motion on second, any discussion?
There was eighteen hundred dollars for frozen stuff, so like this seems like that's an avoidable, if you're gonna pay two grand for something that goes up.
So it has been something that's been that way, it's always been that way. Through the wind and the light snow, the frost got deep, it got down a little over the drain line and. The deposits, if the airport are not the same as deposits maybe at your home, that then keeps things warmer. And so we got caught behind that, it wasn't insulated at all. So what this did was they came in with the equipment, piece of equipment, jackhammer down, through the frost, replaced a lot of insulated, a lot of.
Okay, so made it insulated, that's what I would be, so.
Except and rectify.
So, not bad for you. No. And it was less than a week. Was there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, motion a second, any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? To everybody?
Yeah, I apologize. So the airport warrant is paid the second warrant of the month, any expenses the weekend need. Avoid paying until the second of the month, we do that with the airport. So this is the one time you listen to the airport one like that. At the end of the year, we'll reimburse things like wages that we just pay out of the general fund on the in-between.
Okay.
Would they have like, I mean, do they have like a, an account for when things break and things like that? Or how is this eighteen fifty eight, like with something like that? Like, do they have, is it the town's general fund or does the airport actually have something?
This came out of the airport, this came out of their checking. They have reserve. They still owe a lot of money to the town, but.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you're not finding solace in six, in six and three airport room.
No.
Be fair to them.
No, we're, we're, what are we doing with our best? So we, like twenty-seven upside down right now, is that what we, uh, we look at these numbers, I know.
And I want to say, yeah, it was, it was right around, and it was twenty, yeah. It was less than it was last year.
Right.
And right, so.
We have been closing, it's been getting less, but it's been better than it has been since I've been here.
Originally.
Yes, we're just, we need an awesome company to come in and do something, anything, anything.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm, we expire away. I had a meeting that was very productive with the, with main chamber. So that controversy jump that we made back in twenty twenty-one, they reached out to me, wanted to talk about, what do you have for unique assets? We have an underutilized airport. And we are now working on a regional event, by regional, I mean northeast event to be hosted at the airport. I'm hopeful that they can pull everything together. Once they have a better idea, then I will let you know if there's going to be approval to do things like that. Talk about finances, if there's a financial contribution, if there's a greater public benefit. But most people don't know that, most people don't only have the hangar space. And they're trying to create a better inventory as to what we have for spaces that are that large. So it was about an hour and a half worth of meeting with those folks to talk about that, that they were especially interested in Uzul Park.
Was that the big group that was down there? Because there was a big group down at Park Day, like from one period.
No, this is just to, it was to the chamber and me talking about different things. They're also gonna be drawn in as a part of their bass promotion. They're gonna be drawn in, they kind of back, but they're gonna come down and.
You're gonna be doing what?
They're gonna drone.
Like the camp.
The actual touch to the boat launch, that's important to people. When I was this laid out, what's the security here and there? They're gonna drone the whole area, go back on the river, turn back on you, and we're gonna feature us on the website. Then there's also another promotion coming up, it's some good printing, and they're gonna feature Uzul Park in front of that. The airport opportunity was what brought that up.
Yes.
And let's say we're gaining the most anything in our area.
The lost community, right on. Let's see, number eight here, discussion action on March nineteenth, sewer committee.
I will draw for the sewer committee in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars.
Second, it's a motion second, any discussion? If none, all those in favor? Public comment? Anything out there?
Well, they're right there in my, in my view. I'm already gonna bring up the obvious. Too predictable. You have one question. You're a buck, that's a big, you're a big. Can I?
Wrong, yeah.
I blocked you. If something in the town. Right, it says that if you have a cat, you gotta clean the bathroom and all that stuff. I mean, if you're walking your dog down Main Street, get it and then clean it up. Why is it?
It's smaller, isn't it?
Horses are a grandmother game when they're forms of, yes, that's where I go like.
I'm just saying. I think that if it's in a parking lot.
Oh, yeah, that's literally beating a dead horse here, man. You can't, no, you can be, we've been robbed and robbed.
No, but if you put a dog here shit in a parking lot, it'd be a problem. So I'm just, I'm just asking, because I saw it was a pretty large.
I don't believe in this.
Okay, I just was asking, because I don't really want to stir up any trouble, I just don't understand why it doesn't have to be addressed.
No, it's like it's.
Illegal persons, they're.
Yeah.
We had already, you know.
Like three years ago.
Yeah, right, if we didn't, right, we offered to buy the bags.
Hey, but it does go out with the rain.
So does a dog, okay, it's just.
The town ordinance of. That we. We didn't have to pass, right, but. We're then. No, we're waiting for it.
Just get a bear, ball, food back, so we have a sound room.
We need a horse station there.
We just put a shovel up there beside them, hitching box.
No, I, it's valid. Hopefully it doesn't become more of a problem than it already is, because then it would be a very big concern.
It just, you know, there are people that are gonna walk through and stuff like that, I just, it's just that.
No, I feel you.
Then you have them damn street dogs.
Yeah, it's always in there. Any, anything else for public comment?
If they assume any.
It's valid.
When they're not.
He's not.
He's not. Okay. Just wanted to let you know I am on the school board currently and it's a bunch of time and. It's not pretty. But I do know you're picking a new board member tonight and present company is who I would recommend.
I'm not interested, but thank you.
Start nubby.
But the board is leaning very left and we need to shift it a little to the right. It's, it's very obvious in their policies.
So. Julie.
I'm just throwing it out there.
No, thank you, though. Anything else on public comment? Okay, we will dive into number ten here, discussion regarding fire department capital plan list. Please.
So for several years now, probably approaching a decade, we've tried to get together as department officers and publish yearly, usually right around, right after your election, in case there's new board members. And I think Chuckie wouldn't have seen this last year either, because you came in mid-year, right? So there's a couple, for this, so we publish this every year. To just try to get the, the select board current on what the needs of the department are. So that nobody's surprised, hey, we need a fire truck or something like that, right? So the idea is forewarned is forearmed. And also, many times, the board has come to back on us and said, well, have you considered this? Or have you thought about that, especially in terms of funding? So it's always good to get the two-way conversation going. So I'd like to go over, we will hit each one pretty quickly unless you have questions. But this is a ten-year plan. If, if the expense is not more than five thousand dollars, then it doesn't qualify, it's not on the list, if you will. So ten years, more than five thousand dollars. And there's, there's really only a couple new items on here from last year. So those that got a chance to see it last year, it's mostly the same. Every year, of course, we reorder things, re-prioritize things, accomplish certain projects and things get crossed off and moved to the bottom. The bottom shows you the projects that have been completed over the past several years. In the bottom, the ones that are in green, at the bottom, were accomplished either in whole or in part by outside funds. Be it TIF funds, be it grant funds, be it ARPA funds, or something that's not property taxpayer funds. So we, we've done a pretty good job with, with that. A great example recently would be the Airpack purchases for two hundred thousand bucks, you know, ninety-five percent federal grant, if you will. The, the, even more recent than that would be the side-by-side project, where at the very bottom, which was a hundred percent not property taxpayer fund. So we, we think we do a pretty good job on that, we want to continue to do that. So that's what the bottom represents is completed, so there's a couple of recently completed projects from last year that are very, very vulnerable. So up at the top. I'll go through it quick. Replace fire station fascia, for those that aren't aware, there's some deficiencies with the product that's on the fire station that's falling apart. It's, it's difficult to say, oh, let's replace it all, because some of it appears to be in good shape. And then you come back next month and look and things change. And Matt, Matt, I know you specifically noticed, you know, new spots appearing. I've gone out recently and gotten quotes to replace it all.
Oh, you did?
Two reputable local contractors, well, I attempted to. This was in the winter, I still haven't seen quotes from either one.
I was gonna say online, right, I'd love to know the number.
I do, that was the point. I would love to have a different number on there besides thirty-five thousand, because that's my guess. Actually, that was the engineer's guess. But we'll continue to work on that and maybe I can follow up and get some quotes out of these people that have promised to close. Number two is the hose washing, now that's an approved purchase. That will be green when it's on the bottom, because that's a, a TIF funded project, they've already approved fourteen thousand. Now, we're gonna do, we're gonna change gears a little bit on that. We found what we think is a, a better mousetrap and it won't cost more than fourteen. In fact, it will cost significantly less than fourteen, probably closer to ten. So if we can combine a different type of washing head with a commercial pressure washer and a little bit of plumbing in the station to reuse the hot water heater that we already have. We can accomplish the same thing and have the added ability to pressure wash fire trucks and things like that.
Yeah.
For less money. And so we're gonna be moving on that, that should definitely be the bottom of the list for this year's voter as well. And I said in the, in the top right that the items of emphasis is the first one, rescue boat. That I, I have challenged my deputy chief, Darryl Wyman. That, that is his priority for this year, is to obtain funding for a new rescue boat. The one that we have is, it's a great fishing vessel, but it's not much for rescuing. It's been there longer than me and, and it can't go upstream in, in any kind of significant current. So we need what's really a rescue boat of some kind. And so Darryl is working with places like Firehouse Subs, Garrison East, Stephen and Tabitha King, and, and there's others. To try to find funding for that. So the, the anticipation is that, you know, this year, next year, we'd be able to move forward on that. But we want that either whole or, or at least largely some sort of grant. That's similar to the way we completed that side-to-side project recently. So that, that was an emphasis item for this year. Adjustable lifting struts, yes, that's a twenty twenty-five late in the year thing, that's gonna come along. If we had it right now, we couldn't put it on a truck, we're waiting for a new truck, late this fall, and we'll consider that purchase then. The other item of emphasis is the replacing of unit twenty-four cabin chassis. Matt, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago. We're running that utility truck, it's a twenty twenty, sorry, twenty oh one, twenty oh one Dodge one-ton cabin chassis. On a rebuilt transmission and it's old and it's tired. And it's time to replace it. So if I'm following my math right and my dates right, by this time next year or so, we should be able to order that and pay for that with our equipment reserve. So as, as long as we, you know, have over approvals and all those things, of course, but. That would be the general plan, so those, those are the next two bigger ticket items, if you will. Storage building remains on the list, that kind of got put to the back of the list for a while during COVID and, and contractors and materials and things were out of sight, right? And so we said, no, this isn't the right time. It remains on the list. I've got a meeting next week to talk about that, well, with, with waste management, actually. So I don't, I don't have a lot more to share there at the moment. Uh, number seven and number eight, those are new. And it dawned on us that, as you guys know, because you're approved it. Turnout gear is more and more and more expensive. And if you buy more than one set, which is common, you're over the five thousand. And so we should be having that on the list. And it should be every so often, so you notice that we put it out there approximately five years from our last purchase. And then did it again down at the bottom under fourteen, fifteen. Because turnout gear and then hose nozzles and fittings. When you buy any amount of hose nozzles, that's easily five thousand dollars too. And that's replaceable stuff, it, it belonged on the list, it's what we determined. So we did add that this year, not that the need is new, but maybe just the transparency is greater, I think. And then number nine, utility truck. Once, once we replace the cabin chassis of twenty-four, get a better look at what we have today. Maybe we can run that for a short time as a utility truck. Maybe we buy a new utility truck, maybe we can find a grant or something. But, but that's on the list at number nine. Our turnout gear washer extractor is, by the year twenty twenty-eight, is gonna be twenty years old and time to consider replacing that. And there's some new, there's probably a firefighter health and safety grant available for that. There's new washing technology now using CO2. And it gets rid of the, a lot more of the carcinogens and things. And, and so, you know, especially in three or four years, two, three years probably, when that's on the list. That technology will be perfected. So, so that comes in at twenty twenty-eight. We would eventually like to have a combination tool for jaws, put on the second pumper. Truck bay air filtration system, another firefighter health and safety, I think we can get a grant for that. I'm giving you less detail as we go, because it's so far out there, a big one I wanted to hit. Number thirteen. You know, we've got a two thousand six metal fab, it's an international chassis metal fab manufactured in Canada. Fire truck, two thousand six tanker. And it will need to be replaced at some point, and I currently have it up there at twenty thirty-one, I bumped it out a couple more years from where you last started. But that, in today's dollars, anticipated seven hundred thousand. That's, that's something to think about, they don't give those away.
Yeah.
They don't give those away. Fourteen, fifteen are just repeats of seven and eight. And then the last one is, and this is more of a responsible thing to do, communications tower. If you think about, we're a municipality, not a business. We're gonna be here in theory forever, we're gonna have a fire department, public works and sewer department, et cetera, forever. And instead of paying other people, own and maintain a communication site, would it be smarter for us to have one? Yes, and you could probably lease out space and make money doing it, you can. It could probably be an economic development type thing. But it's opportunity that's gonna drive it. And when I say that, I mean available real estate in the right place and the right geography, et cetera. So it's on the list, it's not by any stretch, I didn't even put a date on it. Opportunity's gonna drive that. It's not going to be something you're gonna, him, we come in and talk about until we have an opportunity at the right piece of property. So, but I do think that can potentially be a moneymaker. So that's the list, we must have questions. Happy to entertain any of them.
We're gonna build a storage building.
Well, I'm sorry.
Where?
Where? General thought was, so we have a storage building now, it's a town garage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and so the general, we first thought about moving it, but then public works would like to have the ones on the border. We'd like to have it closer to the fire station somehow situated off the back parking lot. The problem is we have things in there that we needed to pitch, things like rescue boat is in there in the winter. But ice might be out. But it's over there. Um, and it. Rescue bargains and different things.
What do you think, what do you think you can fit that there as far as size? Are you thinking?
I think you do it, easily do a three bay wide, one typical deep. Um. Structure.
Yep.
Um. It's, it's been on the, yeah, something like that.
Does he want the hangers at the airport? Can we like, I mean, like, to build something like that, like, I mean.
Lindsay, if, if public works is inconvenient, I think the airport is gonna be more.
But you're storing a boat in there and the other stuff you don't need like every day. So it's not like your everyday stuff you need, though, right?
When we need it, we need it.
But like the boat you would have not in the storage when it's boats time, I'm guessing, right? Like that's.
Right, but one rainstorm in March or November or whenever, ice becomes water, water changes. It's, that's the problem with that kind of thing. Is you, you don't think we need the boat. I don't think you need the boat right now, but is the river open?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, right, right. But is a lake open? No, so it's, it's, it's difficult.
Hundred thousand, and they're gonna be all engineered up and this and that.
Is that heated?
Well, I would like to, I would like to heat one bay of it. Uh, for the antique that's currently sitting. Uneated.
Where does that sit? Is that over there? That's okay, yeah.
Yeah, we try to get it repaired, fixed up in time for every parade, but we don't always make it. Um. It should be. It's empty. Here's in the back corner of the old station. I don't remember that.
The baiting with.
Yeah, with the charcoal over it, but I found it. It should be, um, you know. You don't, you guys don't think the engineer twenty, twenty eight? No, I don't think, I don't think so. I don't think.
No, you wouldn't. Especially you should be able to package it, right? As long as you don't get out of. You get into some custom, they're gonna tell you you need engineering, but.
It's almost goodbye, uh, wear Butler or ham and lumber garage package. Right, and you, you know, put a, in, insulate one bay, put a wall down the middle and just use a simple heat pump. Right? I don't care if it's seventy two, right? Right? You just don't need anything minus twenty.
Right, yeah.
Um, so that, that's been the plan, but again, it's, it's been pushed off for years because of the market, the.
Wouldn't hurt to have numbers.
It would, it would. And I thought about going ahead and doing that. Um.
But if you're struggling to get patient numbers, the whole garage.
Equally as difficult. I, correct, yeah.
That fire truck you got coming, is that four hundred sixty two thousand? Is that in stone? Is it some twenty five thousand dollars surprises with it? Like, there is a lot of other stuff.
In stone, as far as I know. Um, Richard signed the contract. I didn't. I think there, there's some.
There might be add-ons, that's what you.
Yeah, yeah.
You're paying the manufacturer a bad amount of money to build this car.
Yeah.
But you wanted to speak briefly to the authorization that I gave you last week. Proactively.
Oh, good thought. So, um. Todd Smith, main fire equipment. He sold the business. He bought part of it back. He ended up with some excess fire department inventory stuff. And he said, go on down and have a final sale. No reasonable offer refused. So, so we did. So we went down and spent a thousand dollars on, on stuff that we either gonna need for the new fire truck when it comes. Uh, or cones, things that we need anyway, uh, or use anyway, tape and. A couple of hand tools for the new truck and, you know, stuff like that. So. Um, we did proac-, we did proactively go down and buy some of that stuff because of the sale. Uh, and there'll be some other things to outfit it. The manufacturer will get the number that you're asking about, Chuck. But there's always things to outfit it, you know.
Well, they always.
Brackets.
About anything, you always get them a little surprise.
Well. That's uh, that's a, 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 a good example of that would be, I said here. Two years ago when we ordered it and I said, I'm okay with not buying the fifteen thousand dollar hydraulic generator, but are you guys gonna be okay? If we put some better battery technology lighting on it. At a fraction of the price and everybody said yes, that we're sitting here at the time. So, yes, we need to go out and buy some. Battery operated scene lighting, like in Milwaukee. You, you, I'm sure you've seen them a, a bunch of times with, on scenes, you know, um. A tripod type Milwaukee light with a battery. It's a lot less expensive. Than the fifteen thousand dollar hydraulic generator on the truck. And so we made a trade then. So, yeah, you're gonna have to buy a few things to outfit any new product. Even though you largely will reuse the equipment. You got more space and an opportunity to make things better than you did. Brackets, come out things, things like that. Radio, it'll need a radio.
Yes, yeah, them surprises.
Well, they're not surprises to us. Uh, and they're only surprises to you if I don't tell you about them, right? So. Uh, I'm trying to be honest about that, but there's always, there's always a few thousand dollars to help with a truck. Um, so any other questions or anything on that?
Uh, I think we could definitely talk more another time about the uh radio communication site and tower. I, I know we spoke before. Uh.
Many years ago, when we started showing up on the list.
Really, and if you think real estate wise, why didn't we act then? Uh, so. Really, if, if I, I think it would either be the.
I don't think it's from lack of effort, um, his part or mine.
Right, I just, I don't know. Does it warrant a further conversation? Could be a full board to kind of. Or is it just not feasible at this point?
We have a prospective piece of property. That was independently identified and it's not publicly released and it won't be, uh, but the owner of the property has, um. Due diligence, I'd say, um. Before they could negotiate with us and they had not been willing to commit the resources to see that for you. Or if they had the available pool of knowledge even to be able to do that. Um, that's the big obstacle right now. That value I don't think has changed uh for the parcel that we're looking at. It's a matter of. Finding the right person to do it and we have not. But it would also be public works. Public works, we, we're paying stateless now for public works. Why? Because you want them to have your cell phones. We want to be able to reach them. And when they get to certain parts of time, we can't reach them on our radio. So we rely on having their phones. Do you help all that? We wanted to answer when they call in. We want to be able to terminate it when they go. But, um, yeah.
Well, I'd rather lease to you than lease from you. So, I mean, there's.
Yeah, the, the concept there is that, you know, we're a department in perpetuity, Gary, right? They might not say you're large walk someday on the side of the truck. Somebody say something else, but it'll be, we'll be here. And. You're always gonna have that need and, and we currently pay per year. Twelve hundred. A little more a year for the tower owner and scouting you and, you know. And those goes up forever. You know, should you have your own site, you. Could probably make a good deal with a communications company to manage the site for you in exchange for a small spot on the tower. And get managed for free. And then lease out other space to other entities. Um, things like. Um, Seco Security uh is a great example. Internet companies like Red Zone or. fuzzy communications. Always looking for spaces on towers. And, um, so, you know, you could. You could pay for, not only pay for the project. I think you could, you know, upriver stream for.
Oh, for a long term. Oh, yeah, yeah, right, definitely. That's never gonna stop. The need will never not be there.
But to, to have a fire department who's, does everything that they can do to be. Independent and take care of themselves no matter what. Right now, we're a little bit hostage to somebody else's tower on somebody else's hill in somebody else's town.
This way, this way, isn't it?
CMP and so you're relying on a lot of other entities. They are not, not so much taking care of your own emergency service unit.
Yeah.
And so. Again, it, it's, it looks like a lot of money on the paper.
Yeah.
But I, I, I think, I think if you take revenues into account. And the fact that, you know, you're gonna be here forever, it's probably a wise thing to do. But it's opportunity that's gonna drive the timeline. It's just what I think the note says.
Yeah.
Exactly.
For sure.
Any other questions on that?
Or anything? No, all right, that does it. Right, well, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'm jumping forward here. Number eleven, uh, discussion action on library board rules and regulations. Uh, came from the Library Board of Trustees, the uh. Previous board, um, and their goal was to have it approved and to you for reordering view uh before. Their first regularly convened meeting, um, which is named Thursday. So they offer this up just as kind of guidelines they thought that might also help better attract. People that would want to serve on that board, uh, having an understanding of what their expectations are. But then also trying to sensitively reinforce the importance of attending meetings and things like that. Because they're elected, you can't move them off after three missed or things like that, uh, which is the ideal, but, um. You know, they just wanted to set out, like, so, um, if this is good for you, then it is good for them in a motion in order.
Want to take on the new rule regulations separate here?
Motion second. Uh, any discussion for the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Um, number twelve, here, discussion action on resignation. You have an email from Samantha Delory through the, you know. One of the four side fifty four directors to the school board, she had resigned and she is now in the Lord's watch residence. The board is going to accept her resignation.
Oh.
Yep, motion.
Uh, motion in the second, um, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And thank her for her time and doing what she did for us.
Uh, number thirteen here, the second action on appointments. So, uh, series of appointments here, I thought, except for the rest of the day, well, everything to do with the treaty will go into. Your consideration of appointing a replacement. Um, I received two applications just tomorrow's meeting. Um, fill the vacancy. I have Samantha Hilton and Anna Dixon. Uh, Samantha Hilton. Uh, also submitted a letter which I advanced to you yesterday, the day before, given its length. Um. And so, uh. Sam was just elected to a three year term. Under statute, you do not replace that three year term. You are only appointing. A director to serve from now until the next town meeting, at which point in time, somebody will be elected for two years to fill the term.
Okay, so that's a one year appointment?
It's just through town years, one twenty six.
So you have just one position open?
It's the vacancy left by Sam there, okay? So we're giving an appointment. Um, to the school board to expire town meeting twenty twenty six. Or when a successor is elected or qualified.
I, I see that Samantha is here. Uh, which I really, speech balling, right? I mean, you're here. Hear anything else, um?
So someone's gonna make an own agency or something?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, then, um, the reappointment building for the term going to next years.
I'll second it. The motion was second, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And, and thanks so much.
Congrats.
Um, what else do you have? Uh, the next would be, uh, we've talked about the point of sort of making this last week. More than applications. We did have an application on file for Cody. Now he submitted an application. Um, and so you have reports that were previous to the sort of mission that has, that they were willing to. Um, serve out a term. So this again, because you're elected, you're studying for the next year. Uh, Robert Vicker and Cody Stain on mine.
Want to accept the applications?
Second, motion of second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, I have favorites. It's that son, glad those guys stepped up to fill that void. That's, that's nice.
That's good, Jesus.
Appreciate it.
Uh, that's for what? We normally don't step out this way until April starts, but I figured we have both the own presence, let's do it. Um, Caroline Gara, I believe is the pronunciation. She's a new resident to town, or Sophie Mayling. She has experience and interest and background in planning. Also, she would like to be on the planning board to fill one of the three vacancies there. Again, until trying to be able to.
Make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
The motion on a second, uh, any discussion? Oh, seeing none, all those in favor? And that's.
Um, fourteen here, uh, discussion action on elected officials. Second, this is from free budget or mid-budget discussion. Um, in terms of the rationale behind what the select board makes, what other board the committee is making pound. And then what other county. Someone that should make. So, um, the first page that you have is kind of a listing of what's where we are right now. The top part is the select board. Um, you get thirteen twenty per year. That's flat. You can come to all your meetings, no meetings. You get thirteen twenty, that's proportionally uh based upon your terms. So tax assessors are five hundred. Planning board members are five hundred. Um, and, and what I did to the right to. Show you how it all kind of breaks down is I've looked at the number of meetings for the past five years on the, each board and committee has had. And then taking what they're getting paid and bringing it down to a money per meeting that they're getting paid. So select board members on average are making about fifty seven dollars per meeting. Uh, tax assessors are getting paid one hundred and forty seven dollars. And concretely, those meetings last less than half an hour. And the planning board is at sixty two dollars and fifty cents. Now that's taking what the proposed stipend, the current stipend is. With the average number of meetings over the last five years. So some years it's up, some years it's down. Um, but I use the average, the rolling average of the five years.
Did it come in respect twenty six where people, when they took the papers out this year, wouldn't, wouldn't have known?
There's not gonna be any change until the budget of next year. But I think it's something that we had two months ago. We had a little bit of.
Yeah, oh yeah, some monthly one kind of that did.
Right, and so I think that is also because it affects what this board would consider compensation. That it really needs to get out there newsletters and things like that to get the public involved, different frames of the structure of it. So what I kind of did, because we talked about, and you Chuck especially was saying. We should be paid to participate and if we don't participate, we shouldn't get paid.
Right.
And I think that there's a lot of public support for that, but uh, not my job to tell you that one way or another.
No, when it's, when it's like that, you know, you can't say, you can't bring it up and say, you missed half the meet, don't give you half it, no.
Right, so anyway, I, what I've kind of done is said, members would be at sixty, a chair would be at seventy five, just for the sake of numbers. And see how that plays out with the boards and committees based upon the average. Just something conversational to get it started. I worked that out, rounded up for budgetary numbers. Um, you know, you might have twenty four meetings, but what if you have to call a special meeting?
Yes.
You're negotiating contract with the county manager or the union or whatever. You just, just don't know. So you're looking at a little over twelve thousand dollars. What gets spent gets spent, what doesn't goes back into the general, but, um. I, I hope that that provides you a good start. Perspective as to how you folks are compensated. Page two, I pulled together a little one that's limited. But that is communities that are near us or towns that have population in our size. And then what we looked at was what's the structure of their government? Are they a working select board? Are they a select board with a manager? Do they have an admin like Smithfield does? That does a lot of the work like I do, but I still have to the board to be that working board. Uh, and then you've got a couple councils in there, um, where the board act, where the council actually acts as town meeting. Most usual. Um, they have the ability to pass ordinances and things like that, so.
Cola, like I see on some of these, it's like the.
Pasta living. Right, so I, it did come up. There are only two places where it came up, but Kenabunkport, the chair of the Kenabunkport, uh, select board, which. You know, was a five member board, just like this, the town manager that makes price what I make. Their chair makes seventy five fifty a year. And I said, well.
Well, that's a.
Yep.
For us, like this thing are like Clinton, they have thirty three hundred people, they have five board members, they have a manager, and they have like. And there, that's why I asked them, like, what's COLA?
So, yeah, sorry, so the COLA, it's three thousand now, they've just accepted a cost of living adjustment. So those will go up every year in line with whatever other town employees are hit, not what. You know, CPI is, but what you're giving to employees, and that's how Kenabunkport, the sixty nine twenty center, that's how you got there. It had been over the series of increases, because there's eighty nine cents that also goes for that that they get. Um so most of them, surprisingly enough, were just paid annual and had nothing to do with participation. Um but Oakland does pay for participation, um they pay thirty dollars a meeting, and. Fairfield pays for participation, but they also cap the compensation.
But they have.
Oh Belgrade, sorry, also uh pays for participation.
Fairfield, but they have a, no, that. I know, I get them confused in Pitt, Pittfield has a. Different, they have a council.
Fairfield has a council too, yep. And so the council pay in Fairfield is through charter, so they can't increase it, you know, they can't increase or decrease, it just is what it is.
They've always got something to come out for actually down there.
But so, I mean, the top is by population to show where you are, the bottom is compensation based upon where you are, so you're about in the middle of the top. And you're just slightly shy of the middle or the bottom, and and the range is widely far.
Yeah.
And and I will generally discourage you from looking at the place you're on this list, but look at the structure, so the manager's select board leadership, I think is really like the most important.
I mean, Athens Bay, they're they're the poorest town in around, they don't have the, they have nineteen thousand, the first one.
Right, because they were, and I think Seoul was very similar.
Yeah, but I mean, we can't.
But it also, you know, it gives you a place to be able to say, okay, well, I could see being compensated less, I could see being compensated more, I can also see there being a change in the compensation structure. Nothing for your term, but I think that both of these documents kind of give you that.
Was Madison, I'm seeing that.
Sorry, I forgot about Madison.
What, hell with them. They got a plant up there, you need some more money to make it work.
And and I think when you go back to page one, and you look at the way that we've. Arbitrarily decided to set stipends here, I think that's why I wrote the sixty when I was proposing. Because the select board depending more getting about sixty dollars a meeting. And so if you say a meeting's two hours, okay, well, that's fair, because by the way, we're gonna take payroll taxes out of you and everything else. Um you don't want to be a reason why you're here, but you don't want it to be prohibited to somebody who can stay.
Well, it's it's so, this board, we've never really had an issue with attendance, if you will.
Right, that everybody makes, if you can't, you're you're not on vacation, you're on vacation.
And that's weird, that's a lot of meetings.
Yeah, yeah, uh but is is everything underneath us that seems to be they're not full, or they're just not attentive, uh. Or that they're for wrong reasons, they don't attend, uh.
I don't think we'd be paying any less considered, I know it's a select board, but some of them others have been having trouble filling it.
Right, and I.
This one, I mean, thankfully, like just stepped up, like we were in that spot.
Yeah, so it certainly shows you that we do need to change the structure, you hate to just throw money at things, uh. But people do want to be compensated for their time and to volunteer and be on the budget committee or. Something else, even with the fire, it just, it helps to be paid, right, you're still volunteering your time, but it's compensation.
But you're getting some of this, like bank boards and some of that, geez, and knocking.
Under positions, I mean, most elected positions, there is some sort of like. I mean, there's volunteers and there's elected officials, I think that that's where the. Different differentiator there.
I just don't think that we should decide on our own. What is, yeah, I I don't feel like we, I don't. I mean, is that something that budget looks at, you know, and and.
Well, no, we, the selectmen put those. Stipend on the planning board, some of their money didn't they mean without going front of the board is.
Right, we we increased.
It was proposed in a budget, and that budget went to town meeting, was approved, and that's where the money from planning board came from.
Not that, this is a town, but I mean, I mean, some agricultural courts, I mean, the board directors do set their. Pay, I guess, when they get paid, but because a town is different, I mean, that's different.
Right, I I think that this board should take a look at all boards and committees, including its own. Not today, but. And propose a structure for yourself, for every in the board and committee, and a rank for yourself and every in the board and committee. You're not entitled to that, that's gonna go through town meeting next year and become effective after town meeting next year, that keeps hands clean. But I think it would be probably, if you can get this done in the front half of the year. All a special budget committee meeting and have them go through it, whether you do it with them or they do it alone. Um and get it, because you want it to be a transparent process, you need it to be a transparent.
Absolutely, yeah. I'm a jack of all hands.
Yeah, right, right.
I mean, I do, but just not to say.
I think that's how I would recommend going about it, you put together a full thing, hold yourself to the same standard you want all they're on the board and committee to.
And I think that we're not doing that, I think that there's, I I definitely hear when you say it like, I don't wanna say it because it's for meat, like. But we're the only thing that everything else keeps going up, all we hear is cost, everything costs a bit, and like, we're making sure everyone else's pay is going up, like, we're just doing it like for the same amount that has been done ten years ago.
I mean, I think that's.
Not that like that is why we do it, but in the same sense, like, there's no one above us to do it for us, so like we kind of.
I don't I don't think it's ever been, not, I just never been.
No, my life, I'm back, I think I took, they probably did do more, well, in my lifetime, I think there's a town manager, so. Bodies even.
So yeah, uh do we agree enough that we want to pencil something formal in, uh we'll put in something, we'll look it over, see what we can come up with? Uh it's definitely a good start.
Is there any other information you think would be beneficial when we get to that point?
I think that this, I mean, like, it could be different towns, but like, I think that similar structure that we have, population, having like, you know. This town manager and select board with that, I think that that's the type of information where you can make comparative analysis to see where we sort of stacked up and, you know, that's.
Is anybody, are any of their under commit, you don't mean to you, is, are other towns paying their their budget committee members and their, no, that's.
No, you're seeing, you're seeing, so not, I think we're the only town in. Or one ways that has a separate board of assessors. That went through their work.
That is, that's why we should have a discussion about.
So that's, that was brought to me the other day.
I've had that work several times about.
It is weird, and I don't.
Bit of a conflict.
Know what kinds of the assessment, I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily know, I don't know why it is.
Because they used to have to go. I mean, and not till all that long ago, if any new villains, they go out and measure them, look them over, this and that, before they had a full-time assessment, it's because they. Cause there was quite a lot to it. But not all that long ago.
As as for right now, what are the, what are, I don't want to downplay what somebody does.
It's time, so be careful.
Okay.
Yeah, don't.
What do you do as an assessor?
Well, you've got to, you set the rate and and approve any abatments, you know, that gets screwed up, you have to, you have to go through them and.
She feels there's a reason that wouldn't be able to be done at this board?
We'd have to be, you'd have, when you made, took your papers out and everything, you'd have to be. That would, it had to be all rolled in.
All right into one title, is that how that would be?
Yes, you you have to take it to town meeting, then after town meeting, you. If if you got approval, then it would be the next election when terms expire.
That's.
It it back in the nineties, that's when it all kind of came true, because it was, do you want select men and assessor at the time, and they said yes, well, then the next year they undid it.
Oh, so it's only used to happen and they broke.
Cause you see, cause you step, April first, you used to have to declare everything, and usually them assessors were here all day on April first. You still, you could, you had to do that, if you didn't do that, you had no recourse, they could tax you for, you didn't declare things.
And right now. Donna essentially handles everything.
By that board of assessors.
And then you kind of just review what she's proposed to you or no?
Yeah.
Okay, so similar what, which you're packaging everything up to presenting it.
Right, yeah, so, I mean, in the past, it's been three or four meetings for tax assessors where you commit taxes, so you decide what mill rate you want to set. And it's a very small variance, really, it's the difference between ten dollars a quarter and ten dollars forty five cents. Oh yeah, there's an impact there, but it's not substantial, um.
The payment business, she makes a mistake, the bill gets sent to someone different, she, you you have to go through that process of, of giving someone a payment, you just can't. Do what you're able to, say a mistake, a wrong, build the wrong person, uh whatever, the, you know, they're just. You know, like over assessed, you know, because it, it was just a technical area, it still has to mean. There was eighty two thousand, it must be a statistic, and the bill was a hundred and eighty two thousand, you still have to.
Meet.
Go through, meet and go through that and get them.
You might have one of those meetings, you might have two of them, and then there's a meeting in the fall to sign formality, just sign the municipal valuation returns and it's a state revenue service. So that's all prepared to come in.
Yeah, well, that's when they, when they up to valuation enough to keep the state happy, you know, they have to be fooled by the assessors. They're up that like twenty percent the whole time.
Yes, largely consensus. We will give the values increase running some across the board to try to chase, and that's where we're at.
Yeah.
So interesting, interesting, you need to roll that all back in this one title? To a, well, one to budgetarily save, uh and to two kind of streamline the process, not to downplay what they do, but.
They used to have fence viewers committee, you know, so somebody, years ago, they had a wrangle over town, a line, you go, that's three of them. Well, three people go, I can remember some of that, and go to, oh, I think it's here, I think it's here, and you, they could be sacking great a lot cheaper.
Um I think it should be a little more formal about coffee about that.
It's not, it's not a great big deal, but tradition, I guess.
We'll put on a future meeting where we've got space, then we'll make sure that invitation is to criticize, if everybody wants a raise, you gotta take on more work.
No, that's it, good, yeah. That's a good, good thought.
But if you come up with anything else that you'd like to get added to this information, which I, I appreciate it.
Good wholesome entertainment, too.
Always, always.
Are you, Dan and Chuckie?
That assessment part, I kind of enjoy that part of it.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it was too brief, I think.
Yeah, no, for sure. Yeah, 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 uh with your number fifty, uh discussion action on fee schedule.
Uh so immediately after you approve your fee schedule, um I have made just a few slight recommendations. Um inherently increases, um the color copying, I want staples, because we don't want to be staples, we just want to be a little service, it's not bare bottom. Um and increasing color copies by twenty five cents, um and then you get down to your public works and your excess materials, so used culverts and cutting edges. I'm recommending we increase those from a dollar foot on used culverts to two dollars a foot, and then you're cutting edges. Six feet or less for five to eight dollars each, and then more than six dollars from ten to fifteen.
That just because of market increases and the cost of those things, or like?
Yeah, I mean, we don't get rate home, but we also, if you're gonna give, if you're gonna give one giveaway, right? And for that, you're gonna give somebody, you know, it just, it's an opportunity for.
Do we have a risk selection, use calls or something?
It's hit or miss.
Yeah, depends what they're doing, because sometimes they come up all stoked the L and.
What if they want to look at them, what do you do with this?
Call here, we'll get you in touch with the department, and usually people want to walk along. So we try to schedule it at the start of the day or, I mean, break time.
Mostly all metal or metal, plastic?
Mostly metal, mostly, and mostly we won't let you put them on a public road, but people will get them, you know.
Woodchapel, yeah.
Woodchapel, yeah.
I was actually thinking this, I'm good, well.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that's.
No idea.
Yeah.
Why, that's when the kid breaks a slide, are you suing yourself?
Fantastic ones, actually, they're fantastic slides.
Smooth on the inside, right?
Yes, yes, I've been using at the center, slides, they're fantastic.
I got friends coming. It's great, they love it.
Motion in a second, uh any further discussion on the fee schedules?
We'll give merit you, but you get the door.
That's true. No, it's. That's everybody. Sixteen here, discussion action on released tax acquired properties. We're gonna start a quote in the next twelve months, and we'll add that to the fee schedule.
Yeah, right.
I will make a motion to uh release the tax acquired property at where? Do you have the?
Some cent Meadows.
Some cent Meadows, uh thirty nine Meadow Ridge Road to Draciel.
Second. Uh motion in the second, uh any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? So everybody signs on there and we're not scolded of the name.
Um seventeen, discussion action on corrective deed downtown parking lot. Okay. So the real estate office was before, we only was uh, well, we just joined.
I remember that, yeah.
It's going, it's under par. And behind it is a piece of property that the town fought that they deeded to the previous owner of that building. But instead of dealing that to that building, they, it appears that it was done in house. They deeded the parking lot between the law office and the pub to them instead.
Oopsies.
So the municipal parking lot's owned presently by Bruce Burn, or Maple Maple. And the town owns the sliver.
Chuckie, you signed my name.
He was right.
So the town owns the sliver parking area behind the old Buddhist one. So mainly Maple, Bruce Burn has agreed to sign this back over our parking lot. If we sign over the parking behind the building that's, you know, that's one right there space, um.
Do we own that, is it ours to give?
We own the property, yes, the town in two thousand and eight. Deeded the municipal parking lot over to these people.
Okay. There's a house that's for sale behind that too, I just want to make sure whatever we're doing, like we actually did.
Well, so the house behind this for sale too.
Yes, I just want to make sure that they're not gonna be like, no, that's not working, like, okay.
It's, so the town, unknown way, unknown way, owns the sliver behind the real estate homes, so we're gonna. We have a signature on the municipal parking lot deal already, we're gonna give them a signature on this deed, and then we'll file it. We, I declined to pay legal fees for this because they were opposing, um and they need to clear the title, and uh we're gonna pay them. Twenty one dollars to report it for them.
All right, then I'll make a motion to move to.
Sign the corrective.
Sign our corrective deed. Please be.
Okay, I'm going to ask that everybody sign on the line if you vote in favor of it, above your name, please. I can't get troubled with registering.
Yeah, we have to do another one.
Yes, I need, ready?
Uh okay, so uh.
What?
You need to sign above your name, see Charles Farren?
Yeah.
And he's right, sign Charles Farren above that.
Yeah, it was me last time, don't worry. It's fine.
It's cool.
Uh so there's a motion in a second, uh to deed this back over, then is there any other discussion on this? No, seeing no discussion, all in favor? That's. Quite mixed up and I'm glad.
We are willing to make.
I'm gonna be like, oh, my bad.
That's a big one. Right there.
Yep, that one's George.
That sounds probably.
I think that's where the town office used to be.
Down there?
Yeah.
Really?
We'll build on there.
Really?
Yeah.
Behind the real estate.
No, I don't, I really didn't want to go that near, okay, I'm going to have to sell that piece. Uh other business, the board have anything? Making a pretty good time, uh so for me, uh instead of in my reports, I saved it for the end here, uh I don't know if anybody's noticed the trash downtown. I don't want to hang on people, but like I use Gregory's for trash, you know, means every Tuesday, they come pick up the trash at my house, uh. I don't want to see your trash all week long on the sidewalk downtown. Whether you're a resident or a business, when it's not trash day, uh in recent. Weeks, I guess, my 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 gripe is, it's it's overflowing, right, that. There are one or two trash cans, they're on the sidewalk, they're literally piled on the sidewalk, I mean, the bags are outside the trash cans, they're in the walkway, uh.
I think of the instruction of like public walkways, right?
Just all the way around, it's a problem, yeah, uh but it seems like there's really not much we can do about it, like it is.
You can give them littering tickets, right?
Do something with littering. All right, when it comes back to, of course, I will be recalling the shares to have people cited for their trash cans, and I mean, Tuesdays, everybody's trash cans on the sidewalk. My tenants, my own, you know, uh it's different when it's trash day, but if it sits there all week, and then of course. And I don't want to frame this in a bad light for businesses, we have businesses downtown, and I realize that they have to have dumpsters. But with, it's pretty small, it's pretty compact downtown, uh and when their dumpsters are overflowing, it just, I can be frank, looks kind of shitty quick. You know, come the end of the week, you've got the restaurants stop overflowing, you've got business stuff overflowing, and then you have. Residents bringing their trash and putting it on the sidewalk, uh we do have a dump in our town, but I don't want to be a trash town. Uh we do have a dump in our town, but I don't wanna be a trash town. Right, so I don't know how we.
They can bring it back for free.
Yeah, well, there's, there's a lot of options and I, I just don't know what the best way is, like you can't.
What are you talking about, the barrels?
Uh yes, they have the trash barrels and then the large commercial ones that like the restaurant have, the business, uh I don't. They're just the ones that's down there, uh there's a few other large dumpsters down there as well, uh that just prove to kind of be unsightly or in the way, if you will. I had spoke with Richard about what are our options, uh and I don't know if it's possible for our main street section here. So you're talking basically from Everett's to the railroad tracks. If you're really, that's our downtown, right, once you move out of that, you're essentially residential, uh. There's any way to have that trash picked up? Uh and to my knowledge, I don't believe there's anyone that does a daily trash pickup service uh in our town unless somebody else knows that. It's, it's Monday is planned stays, you know, Tuesdays, uh we had discussed whether it would be feasible. If we were at the, if we as a town for that small area offered trash pickup daily from our. Town group.
We wouldn't have people dumping shit there all the time if we do something like that, they're just gonna be chucking their stuff right out the window, I think, but that ends. We can't even give them free trashable and nobody will, I think that that's, I get we wanna do it, but I don't feel like we should reward them for being piggies.
Well, so it's, it's double that, right, I mean, to like the restaurants and stuff or York's or another business, I hate to name them, but hey, there's only so many. Uh I'm sure it would be a help to them for us to, to carry that burden of the, the, the trash, you know, their luggage. The benefit for us is we don't have to see their dumpsters, uh and then. The people that were res- residents or you know, the residential properties, which we're talking four, five properties here. They would get the benefit of the free trash service, but the rest of the town gets the benefit of not having to walk around it or. See it or deal with it, and I don't know what the lesser of all these evils are, or really even the correct thing to do. Uh me and Richard were just talking, brainstorming, it's, how do you resolve it without becoming, I'm calling the shares, as there's trash stacked out on the road.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of issues that come with that.
Yeah.
Oh, and all safety issues.
Yes.
But I mean, all of a sudden, like people own sewer, Ainsley's gonna say, how come?
Well, Ainsley's is in the downtown.
No, but I mean, okay, good, how come a town will haul that trash away here?
Well, so like, so, I'm not gonna ping on them, but like Ainsley's uh would, had a conversation about there's always overflowing. And, and since that conversation, they've actually been fantastic about making sure that it's not, because there was a while that it was overflowing, it would be blowing out into the road. But they were quick to correct it, uh and I don't know if it's worth, you speak to all these residents and that's better. They have pretty limited space out there, where do you wanna see their trash from the road or from the rail trail? Uh but for that, for that downtown section, they just really, they're totally exposed, they're really, they're limited on space, they don't really have parking. And it's not like you say, we can't really park a dumpster down there and say, hey, just everybody use this dumpster over the back, you know, because then you would have people pulling up and just using it.
It's getting picked up once a week, I think it's less of a convenience of getting picked up and more that like people just don't care, they're just. They're whatever, they're cool with it being a gross slaw out there, like, and then picking up twice, they're still just gonna throw their crap out there, because there's no like respect for the environment. So like, we can incur that cost, we can have it picked up three times, guess what, they're still gonna be shoving crap out there, they're gonna have chairs out there next or something, like. I just don't think that the people who are doing this are. Going to be like, oh, that's the reason why I'm just throwing and making a mess, it's no, it's just the disregard. The businesses, I think that's a great incentive for them and like we're always talking about ways to incentivize like businesses and bring in, you know, more tax revenue. It's, I am for that, but for the residential ones, I mean, like. Get pick up after yourself, like, I mean, if we pick their stuff up all the time, they're still gonna leave their crap out because they're leaving their crap out now, like there's.
I'm saying now, I haven't really noticed it.
And I understand what you're saying too, I'm uh holding them accountable, but it's not gonna resolve it.
Hundred bucks, they're not gonna leave their crap out there anymore, like.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Hundred percent, but they're not gonna resolve.
What's, what's the lesser of the two evils, I, where do you wanna spend your money, fighting people, of course, Nick, oh, that the. There's no, there's, there's no one to call, there's no way to fix this problem.
Finding the building owner, like whoever's in charge of the property maintenance there.
So like, if our. Ordinance had passed, I do believe that this would have fallen underneath it and then a little more, a little more enforcement.
Wanna see where the temperature is on it.
But you get, but I gotta run my mouth, but you can't enforce what you got.
No, I, yes, yeah, totally, totally, we can make all these rules, but we can even enforce them, we're gonna call Ron, I'm, I'm busy with something important. Right, it's not that this stuff isn't important, it's just not a priority really to anybody.
And some people, you ain't gonna, you ain't gonna clean them out. I don't know, you're never gonna clean some of it.
You know, I. Stuff, I, I, I provide trash service for my tenants so that I don't have to be a witness to it, but even then, like Gregory's is once a week. And if you're in the downtown area and you don't have a place to store that trash can, it ends up out on the sidewalk because it is probably the flattest even surface.
Where are you, that's stupid, I can't, I don't know.
I can't bring myself and I probably shouldn't, but just, just look.
I will, cause I've never seen them.
You have the, the old train tracks, Depot Street to Mechanic Street.
Right, oh, that's where you're talking.
Residential properties that are in there, and residential trash and stuff on the sidewalk, whether it's in their own containers, their tipped over containers. Or the municipal containers that they just throw their own trash into.
Are all over the backyard. That's what I mean, like it's not, it's the users are doing it, the businesses, I think if you work with them, we're fine, but like I don't think we're gonna change the mindset. Of the people that are doing this, because there's no regard or like.
Right.
Care about.
So if, if that's the case, is the correct action for us as a whole to say, hey, we're not gonna just look at it, we'll have the town guys pick it up. Now, will it make the problem worse? I don't, I don't know, are they gonna produce more trash and be messier? I, I can't tell you.
Buy the landlord, let their rent go up and see if people start picking up.
Oh, that's, that type people.
You, uh your property, if that was happening, you would make sure, that they weren't doing it, that you would make sure you take it, because you are responsible for that building, that property and like.
Well, I live right here, a lot of these rentals, these people might, they're in Massachusetts, so I, I, I don't disagree with you and you're certainly not wrong.
And we can take the extra money that we charge them and we could have it picked up, but like I don't think we taxpayers should be putting the bill for people being trashy, literally, get it?
For us, what are we actually looking at committing, I, I, if, if we were to have the guys make a pastor downtown every morning at nocturnal.
At the beginning of.
Eight o'clock.
You're ending up like water villainers, you know, we have a.
Special colored trash bags then.
Oh, Jesus.
So if you're looking, yes.
People just need to pick up themselves, something gross.
Then I think that it's a conversation, because you've got one that opens at nine, you've got one that opens at noon. You don't wanna live in the trash all, the curb all night, because then you don't run, and I think you're also, and if you did go to that extent, then you're requiring the removal of dumpsters from town property. Which leaves you no dumpsters, right?
Right.
Can't access any of the dumpsters, not one on town property, who are enabling this? I mean, we don't, you know, I mean, this is downtown. But I think that you could do it, it's just a matter of what do you do on some of these kind of thing.
Right, is there enough interest here to have Richard pursue something of trying to find what it would cost us, what the plausibility of it all? I, I just, I wasn't sure, I wanted to come to the whole board, it was like, it, it's kind of a small problem, but right now it's a small problem and I.
Start with conversations with the owners of the property. We wanna work with you, what can we do on here and, you know, we'll look into.
So your, your residential property downtown, there's zero interest to be a pain. Probably should open the door of the office as Claire else, you know.
I like Chuckie's idea like last time, raise, raise the taxes and get their attention.
Yeah, but they don't, they just rent most of them, she didn't give a shit.
And then the commercial, where you have, you get two or three down there, uh you know, what would be the options and what would that look like?
Hopefully talking to them the same way with that one store that did address it when he did, I think having a conversation with them, I'm sure they wanna. Not appear dirty, because people aren't going eat at their establishment if they're.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
You know, I think just bringing it up to them and see what we get with that, I think is, you know, I think we have more, you know. Ability to make some sort of progress and take away at something with that population versus the, there's rent here, I don't care, trash whatever's what you find me. That's.
I mean, with the two businesses in Austin, if you find a, a variable location for a dumpster that could be shared.
Yes.
It's not on town property, but not way out of the way. Maybe it gets fenced.
Yeah.
That's kind of embarrassing, I was like, I've seen.
Shouldn't be seen.
You're gonna have this in this district downtown, it has to be.
Where was you put it in?
Yep.
Come on, I'm not sure, but. You know, I mean, right now, we've got one down in Green Space where you come off open the North Walk, you're on your side by side and you wanna have lunch and you drive to buy dumpster. Right? And then the other one. Oh, it's a matter of not pushing these people to do something, it's matter of how do we help them, help us. Nobody benefits by looking at a dumpster. So could we find a bigger dumpster and maybe we support chain link fence with the slats in between it? I've driven through Oakland the other day, the Sycro station, the Yomato Station headed, and it looks kinda nice, not wonderful. But it's not two dumpsters looking in the face.
Yeah.
If we could find a location where that would be available. Rather than riding on.
Burger Kings, McDonald's and that, and I, pretty generally in the back.
Right, so it's, it's right, you at least just live in a fence, you're not actually seeing everything, right?
Yep. Yeah, that's, I mean, it's probably more, but you know, pertaining more of a health problem too, issue. We gotta do something, but if they don't have a place to put it. Our back isn't an option too.
Would be interesting to see if you could find a location. That would be, I, just quickly, I struggle to find that location, but maybe. Bend something in and then talk to anybody to see if they would be interested in using that.
Even if it's not the perfect location.
Well, if it's free.
Fence.
Right.
Like, there's a loca- approximate location of a dumpster right now that goes down, right?
Yes.
Stream side and it gets bent to the left, because then it ends up on the owner's property.
Yes.
And then the truck is, it maneuvers its way down and around and then runs off out of property and everything else. What if we just agreed to say, let me put it straight down there and fence it and everybody, you have the key to it and by the way, it'll be taken care of.
Yeah. I think it does need to have keys though.
Let's not overlook the problem we have, because there are town owned containers down there, there are private dumpsters, private containers, and we don't have that issue by anyone. If we have offenders, it's the people that live right there and they're taking out their white trash bag and putting it into ours.
I just see like the people who watch this, they're like, well, my taxpayers are paying for it, so why am I gonna hear like that?
Zero knowledge.
Well, there's, there's definitely potential for it to be maybe non costly at all, I mean, we do have the supplier of dumpsters in our town where we may be able to. Work something, so I, I think that actually is a possibility to that idea right there, I think that is probably the. Best pursuable piece out of all of this, I hadn't even really thought of it that way. Certainly better than a pickup service. Yeah.
Because then, guys, you know, they're gonna bow up to that.
I, well, I don't wanna take business from, uh you know, Gregory's or any other.
No, what I mean, the highway crew ain't gonna think that's very funny.
Oh, pick up the trash, uh, well, we do quite a bit of it already, because we do the downtown, we do the ball fields, uh. So in, in my initial thought, it was like, well, you know, it's really not that. Right, you're already doing it, but I, I certainly see the advantage of this. Versus stopping in all these particular places, you know, you gotta have your stuff out, if it's a dumpster, they can come and pick up the dumpster whenever they want, you know, uh. I, I think, does that sound like the most pursuable thing maybe is to kind of see what he can produce on that? And see if the businesses, I mean, I mean, maybe the businesses aren't receptive at all, you know, maybe the renters have no interest in doing that and they're still gonna do just exactly what they're doing. Uh because we don't have a way to stop them.
So I think that's probably the, oh, too new that I see is they're not gonna want to, if we pose an au- auction for them, maybe they will.
So I'm looking to co-locate it.
Probably won't, right.
For everybody down there.
Yeah.
Residential and commercial.
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
Then we'll, okay.
And the incentive should be, somebody's paying, you know, thirty bucks a month, or thirty bucks a week, I can't remember what it is, having your trash picked up, so. There's some savings there for them, potentially.
Every other week, sixty seven dollars.
Is that what it is?
Okay. One night. Waste manager, two hundred.
Kind of, we just have this giant one side.
Yeah, no, okay, uh so, yeah, what's, you'll look at it, uh. Oh, okay, my other one here, uh junkyards. Man, uh they just don't go away, we have some. Key violators that just keep on violating, uh I, I've had myself, I, I've read. I've been here for like fifteen years, I don't think I've, I've seen one pretty dumb. Yes, but I, I just kind of wanted to double down on code being on junkyards. I, I don't bring your junk here and pile it up on your property, I would, I don't have the patience for it, the, the. Yeah.
You got more garbage, you got junkyards.
I'll, 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 I'll give you that.
Having your shit on the doyad.
The, the junkyards, so we, we have several properties that are amassing, I mean, for the one on the water. It, it, I don't even, was it seventy five cars back there now, I think somebody just hauled in a, a massive trailer with more cars in it. They're on our list, they're supposed to be cleaning up and more stuff is coming in, so I don't know if they think that we're a joke or, or what it is, but I mean. We need to draw a line in the sand that says no more, right, I don't care whose property it is, whoever owns the property is gonna get summons to court. And then the court can deal with it.
Yeah, we just need to enforce it, they get hurt.
Yeah, that's tough, right, costs a lot of money and then you have to. Try to recoup it after that.
Right.
Um. May I speak candidly, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
I dilapidated a dangerous building, it's just as much an eyesore as junk. And at the last meeting, we gave somebody a hundred days and then told them to come back and we'll give them more time. That came back to my office, time and time again, and I'm gonna sit here and tell them, like, but. I bet I heard a half, from a half a dozen people, of course they'll be back to you in a hundred days, say, no, I need more time and not anything against that individual, but. We want the line in the sand, but then we let the wave come and wash it away and then we let them, we're gonna draw the line, so if you want it, we.
I don't feel like anybody's working with us.
But that one was.
You're right. Yeah.
And we would consider.
I think, I mean, this, look, look, these people wanna become a junkyard or a scrapyard, Christ, this, this board will do anything we can to facilitate that. I, I don't wanna take your business away, I wanna make it legit and safe for our environment.
People think that, because we have to have a hearing on this before we move forward, but if we have to have a hearing and they come in here and they have a story for you. You have to still hold fast to proof, because that's what they do, they came in candidly, the one on the water world is owned by a very kind and aging. Woman who bought it as a favor of her family and boy, sympathetic, because guess what? She's not the one amassing vehicles there, it's the son, and the son's my receptor, the son is a, you know, he threatens. Uh he does what he wants, he threatens public officials, he threatens people of relation. And if we move forward, guess who's going to court with us?
I know.
It's an eighty year old woman.
Yeah.
That's right, and if you wanna see it cleaned up, those are the hard moves that we have to make.
And I, for me, the, the, it's, it's easier when, when you don't, if you don't wanna work with us, then I'm not gonna work with you. The gentleman who came in and sat here was more than willing to work with us and was very receptive to our. Ideas, uh as well as we worked his, so I, I, I don't think anybody here is unrational, you know, I just. If, if you wanna work with us, we'll give you all the time, as long as you are working and making progress and honestly trying, uh we're not gonna cut your legs out if you wanna leave yet. But if you're just gonna give us the finger, well, then I think this board can do the same thing back.
And good luck.
You and everyone else can go right to court, because it's not gonna be, you're not gonna waste any of my time. So I, I, for myself, I, I'm more than willing to double down with these junkyards, if, if, if you're not trying to clean it up. Then then pay the money and get fined or.
Are you gonna get the money out of them?
Won't be us, it'll, it'll be the court, it'll be nothing for us, all we do is file and then it's in the court scenes. Uh and we can't invent new laws, uh you know, we don't have our own enforcement for these things.
You ever rattle on with all claims court, that's a joke.
Like I, like I said, it, it, I don't know how long I've been here, uh but I, I've only seen one cleaned up and those people, I, I, I went to school with them, uh. They were, took them a long time, but they worked with the town through the whole, and extension after extension, and they had a lot of help, but they did get it cleaned up. Uh and I don't expect anybody to remove seventy five cars overnight or in a weekend, but a, a year's more than enough time. And, and if it's not, then you should have a plan, are you trying to make a business, I mean. I just don't see the reason if they're not willing to work with us, I'm certainly willing to, to take them to court with me, the, the pack can take them to court. And they can deal with a lawyer, you know, uh I, I just think enough is enough, I, I'm not looking to be a. The trash town, you know what I mean, I, I just. Was the same thing with our property, it's, it's really just about keeping your stuff so it's not impacting everybody else and so that we don't, I mean, if you had it all fenced in or you were back in the woods, no one would know. Right?
I mean, we brought the dilapidated building in.
Well, like when it, when it becomes like maybe like a public safety issue and if there are a bunch of, you know. Hazards because of a bunch of cars, like can we then basically like. Put notice, like no one can step on this property until it's, you know, the safety issues are eradicated. And then what's the environmental impact of having that many cars, are they?
That's the big one, because like.
I mean, I feel like that sort of stuff, like it's one thing when someone's got a lot of washing machines or something like that, but like when it's automobiles and you're at seventy five, I mean. That becomes like an environmental hazard, so that feels like a completely different category than someone's gonna. Feels like a completely different category than someone's got much crap on their yard.
And look at all the stuff audits had to do. To be able to do what they do.
Exactly, there's, they understand their balances and.
Audits, yeah, so he went through, he did everything, uh.
Yeah.
So does the state have anything on? Like it's funny, next week, we'll be, there's, there's a state that guidelines for what's considered a junkyard.
That is what we can go by.
Yeah.
We had our own local rules out, yep, two years ago, cause it was.
There's nothing very enforced on there and.
Of course.
All we do is write something that goes.
Right.
But I, I, it just seems so unfair, where, I mean, this guy's working so hard to do everything right, I mean, Christ, we live in it, so we can't have more than five vehicles? He can't have more than five vehicles on the ground. They could be on the property, they just have to go, so he can't have more than five. But someone up here can have seventy five and do whatever they want. Well, that's not right, I mean, this guy's trying to do it right, and if you're cutting his legs off, underneath, whatever you're doing up there. So, uh, that's a struggle, and that's just one property, we have more properties that are like them. Right? There's, at least a dozen, uh, we've seen the list and it's the same list you see year after year. So I just really was looking for the board's feel on, uh, do we really wanna start to push on these junkyards?
I can accept, we're not gonna do it, like.
Right, and for years, for years, the board has not been.
You know, we've talked about this in like five years and like we've never just like dropped the hammer, just dropped the hammer and maybe like.
We have. No, well, turn, cold guy, cold guy, and then.
You get, you get pushing this one, they get the, one you may have hit, you got five cases going, he quits, then what do you do? Start over again, hire another one and you're all, you lost what you gained. You really, you start pushing him, I don't believe this guy really push him, push the shit out of him on this, I don't believe he'll be there.
Are you talking about personnel, Chuck?
No, yeah, no. But I mean, really.
I don't think so. Uh. I hope not, right?
You've been through how many?
I can tell you that even from my office in dealing with the violation on the water road, that I was personally threatened. And I can't tell what you're doing, you know, I'm not gonna tell you anything.
I know who he is, yeah.
Like in this room threat.
I know who he is.
Physical, physical harm.
Why isn't arrested? Like.
Because I can't waste deputies' time to do that, they don't respond to us by and large anymore. I mean, if somebody come take a report, you know, no, I mean, I don't like complaints about ineffective. By people that respond here and, well, did you record it? Did we see it? All this other mumbo jumbo, because nobody wants to deal with it. And Lord forbid, the DA's office actually do something, which then gets you to where we go, because if you wanna do this and you wanna throw a book at somebody. That's our little pocket, the DA's office does nothing for them.
Start posting that stuff up on our Facebook page and put it on like the town thing of what we're trying to do, everything is recorded in there, let that up. Let it be community enforced, let there be pressure from other people, it's not that you're, you know, invading someone's privacy or something like that, put it right up there, let everyone see what's going on, let. Other people chime in and be like, dude, why are you being such a wanker? And let their neighbors tell them.
I mean, that's not gonna foster the best community.
No, right, that.
Yeah.
Right.
Sounds like. I don't know, let the people, neighbors know, he could be contaminating your water supply for your kids, you should be angry.
Well, I, I think the people that have to live next to these. Properties are the ones that are affected the most and can do the least about it, because you, I, I don't know if this is the case, but you've got your dream home and then somebody builds a junkyard, an illegal junkyard right next to your house. And you, uh, are just a regular person of all, but you can't do anything and you're not gonna go threaten your neighbor, because you're not that type of person. But the law really doesn't do anything for you, so I think that's where we have kind of fallen short. Where we leave these for you, the individual to deal with, and that's not really fair, cause there's nothing you, I, we're town. And there's about nothing we can do, right? So as an individual, uh, unless you've got money, wha- what are you gonna do about this? Right, start fighting with your neighbor, and that's not really the right thing to do, uh, it may make you feel better at the time.
Yeah.
No.
Not recommended.
Right, so I just, I, I, I'm thinking that the board is willing, that we can kinda have a consensus that we do really wanna start to push on these a lot harder than we have.
Well, I should not push hard enough here, that's what's happened, so like it's, yeah.
So.
I am going to get a certified letter out of this office tomorrow and we are going to. See about inviting the. Operator of a lot of the junkyards. And talk to you at the next show.
Would be perfect, I'd, no one can.
And see if you have a conversation with. And then if not, then you can vote to initiate legal action against them, because you can't get illegal junkyard up there, because they're still on top of a map aquifer.
Well, but as, but as we know, right, that was a map officer as well, and if you go through the, there, there is a process.
Hmm.
You know, I were.
No, he was still behind. Oh, okay, I thought it would be, so he was, uh. You had me on it, not within a hundred yards of it or something like that, yeah.
So up there, well.
You cannot have a junkyard on that.
I know, but well. Where he's not the owner, his mother is.
Well, you will, she will get a copy of the notice as well.
Because she's a.
Alright, but you.
She'll have to take on another bill.
I would hope. So, I mean, it's, it's by and large our biggest issue right now, and you keep having conversation, conversation, and it only gets worse. You know, I get a conversation, conversation, it just don't make it worse, it's not moving in the right direction, but don't make it worse.
Is there any others in town really? There's some break down.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's.
Well, I know this.
There's a list, there's, there's a list, yeah.
There's a list, but I mean.
I got one on Route Eight South, out across from Lamont.
Oh, yeah, I know that, you get some.
You know, a nice young guy trying to start up a tow company, but you, you don't have a, a tow lot.
What about the one, what about the one on Route Two?
Uh, where? On Route Two?
With the corner of the airport road.
Okay, so there was a certified notice, someone out there too.
Same, same thing, I've drawn for years.
And, but that one there, I just see a, a new fresh notice put on the. Dowing guy taking pictures of, of, I'd say a finance company.
You don't miss much.
No, I don't, I see that going on that day.
I see.
How's that all coming in? So how's that all coming in?
Well, also that's just it, so I mean, all, all the ones that you can think of are the ones that have been on the list year after year with no real change, so they'll all get the same exact treatment as.
But you go to take him to court, take that one, take a one out in court, it has been foreclosed on. Well, how's that all wrangle and?
Well, so that would actually work fantastic, because once a bank owns it, a bank is actually required by law to clean it up.
Oh, yeah, but.
And if we have an ordinance or if we have any pressure on that bank, it'll be done immediately. So the foreclosure would actually only speed up the process for the town, and it would actually make it far easier, the pro- it would be mode every three weeks.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna get a lot of shit out of the way for it.
Right, so I, I, it's, it's all of these properties, it's not just this.
Yeah, but what happened up on Oak Hill?
Yeah, the property transfer, so you had five inches worth of record in a binder, as soon as that property transferred.
You go back to square one, so some of this gets sold, you get, you think you've got him, you've got him, I got him now, it's beautiful to be justice. Then you. Then they put it to someone else's name, you know, then what's.
No, you're, you're right, you, you are, there's many ways that you can get around us. But it's just, do we start pursuing because, you know?
Oh, I don't know, I don't know how you deal with, cause some of these people are just. I wouldn't like to get started, but some people don't know what. Picked up is.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't know, this is stupid, they don't know, you, you wouldn't leave your dog there unless you didn't like him.
Matt, did we know if the, uh, the Subaru dealership on Upper Main Street has made the list now?
Yeah, has made the list.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, vehicles come and go.
And then, somebody wearing a coat.
And, and again, if the vehicles change. That resets us, because I have, we know we need a bin. If we're going to court, we need bins of all vehicles.
Don't they, if they move a certain amount, have to have like a.
That's correct, so that's why they need their own recycling options, that's why. Moving vehicles has their own, you know, detectives assigned, assigned to their unit. And they come out and they get the people that are complying, right?
Do we have it? No, I don't. I mean. I, about it, I shouldn't even say this, but about every farm has got a bunch of old farm trucks up back there. You know, they're, they taking bodies off and this and that and. I mean. I mean, just about, well, they took so many lapids, there's. There's some lapids. You're gonna, you, you tackle all them, they'll get routine.
Well, right, and for the most part, your, your farm stuffs aren't. The regular pickup trucks, right? It's a.
Yeah, it's a wagon.
Wagon, well, trucks, you know, you, you know, uh, and.
But you know, you start on this one and all of a sudden, well, how come he can't get away with that?
If it is registered. Or declared as personal property, it is exempt. You can have seventy five more vehicles on your property, in which park, whichever, which way you want, with whatever fluid inning you want, as long as it's registering. And that's what largely.
Oh, yeah.
For ten farmers, is that they're registered, cause they're running the roads. Or they're declaring them as personal property as a part of.
But, but most of them, it's not so bad that. They're all back and people, I mean, they have got a little wrangle with anybody.
Pretty fortunate that a lot, most of our farms is pretty clean.
Yeah.
The one we have in town, I, I.
I don't think the farmers are the problem.
No, 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 I'm definitely not, no, that's why.
Well, if we just start in on it, you, you, you start, how come he can't get away?
Oh, yeah.
That, that is what people will do, so.
But I think if it got to that, if it got to that point, your farmers are responsible. That they would address it. You know? But I think that if you, as you look at the scope of disparity of, well, yeah.
Because there's, you know, there's places that are just garbage and shit there.
Yes, yes, we dive to the point where we try to make an ordinance just to help, and, and it failed due to, due to lack of explanation potentially.
Well, for people.
But it was things like, oh, it's cause you, you view it as people infringing and telling you what to do.
Like a tick farmer is, Sally was told us that. You don't have to mow your lawn, whatever you wanna be a tick farmer.
Like just different strokes for different.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you don't wanna get down to like, tell them you're gonna mow the lawn, you're gonna paint the windows so red, you're gonna, that don't work.
You shouldn't have to tell people, you can't have that trash outside, yeah.
Right.
I think one might be okay, but thirty two is not.
Yeah, so, uh. Yeah, so I just, just as long as the rest of the board is willing to pursue junkyards a little harder, uh, I had asked. Uh, and then, just cause I have these, uh, McIntyre Road, you guys. Did you guys get CC on that? Everybody read that?
Yeah.
Uh. Although it wasn't our responsibility or our fault, uh, cleaning culverts. It needs to be done everywhere. And it's never done. And honestly, there's not even a safe way to do it, right? You can watch TikTok and see, you know, use a tire and pull it through, that's not safe for public works, right? Uh, then speaking with Richard. We dig them up and replace them.
Or you shake them out and put them back in.
That is not a good, I, I just, I don't feel that that is the right way to do it, but honestly, I don't know. Of a safe way to do it, I really, I mean, if there is not another way to do it, then that is the only way, uh. But I expressed interest in him, because I do feel that we have a lot of plugged. Whether they're ours or the state's. Culverts or slow draining culverts that really just need to be cleaned out. Uh. We've had this problem. Many times over my duration here, and I don't think we've ever been able to find a great way to clean out culverts.
And what are sewer clear?
So that's, that's what I had told Richard to look into, was say, hey, have you seen what we have out there for options? What's it cost? Is it easy? How long? What's the maintenance? And, and what is? The way everybody's cleaning out culverts? Let's find it, get it, and do it.
Well, a lot of these towns and state agencies now have these sewer cleaners too, these, you know, back in the day, for a different living on the sewers, but we had those big trucks. Uh, big water blaster and vacuum unit on these trucks, and designed for the bigger pipes. Um, lower pressure, so it's safer, but you gotta have a water source. Just run these culverts through that.
That's.
Vacuum up.
Cover, well, they, they, it brings, it was like, it would send a fire department and have them just blast water through these things.
Well, if you blast the water through it like that, we're just moving that problem to when it rains again, it's gonna go back in, so one of these trucks will be able to. Vacuum it up, or you get a, you know, load it all on the side of the road.
White brush, go ten inches through and drop it on the back or somehow shove it in.
Well, I, so legit, if it was you or Rob, that is exactly what we do, but I mean, you can't with public works, and, but, public works in their own time will probably do it that way, but they can't.
Cleaner, nature's cleaner.
But, uh, so really, it's just about him pursuing some other options and seeing what we can do to make that happen, whether it's a once a year, we clean out the culverts, because. There's got to be some savings. All currently for property owners, it just for everybody, uh, in, in the McIntyre case, I mean. If that culvert had been cleaned out. In the fall, I know it's the state's problem, but would that have caused that to not flood? Now granted, that particular property is pitched incorrectly, so if it does, excessive rain would flood the house either way. But you kinda feel bad if you exacerbate it because of a plugged culvert, because something, someone didn't do, there again, you've shifted a burden to a landowner. Uh, so if we can proactively once a year clean out our culverts, well, why wouldn't we? Uh, if we.
Yeah, if you, you never could get them all in one year, Jesus, you got thousands of them, I mean, you get them down and down.
Right, that's just right here in the triangle, right, uh, but you can see just a lot of these are plugged, as you've watched this. Spring and they backed up and come out onto the road.
You can unplug them and then they get froze up and we get some of this. Goofy weather, you know, then, and you're.
Right, right now, we're looking at, at the several I looked at, you've got about that much of the culverts that are open. The rest are just filled in with, you know, and it's just broken years of wash and not being cleaned out.
So some of them nice plastic ones they put in too, I know they're supposed to be the cash meow, but they over time they're.
Yeah, collapsing.
They collapse then.
You don't.
They put a list together and get the worst ones first, do so many every year.
Just like anything else, yeah, you just get things on like, you know.
And then just find whether it's, do you have someone come in and do it for us?
Yeah.
Or do we purchase something to make it possible? Is it a joint effort between the fire department and public works?
Yeah.
Can do all this on, you know, X week, uh.
I give you a pressure testing something. You're gonna test the pressure going down.
So. I've only have one more thing, and Richard already touched on it. Uh, yeah, so the last thing I had was the pet wa- the, the pet waste on the rail trail.
The who?
The.
Dog crap.
Yeah, the dog.
Oh, Jesus.
On the rail trail, which is stemming from those apartments, right?
Oh, yeah.
So when everybody walks through, it's on your feet, you come through, I, they're the people I had to start for in the rumor at two o'clock in the morning, because they will park on the rail.
Devil's advocate on that one, I will tell you, I can't get off my horse and pick it up if I'm on that trail, so like there are, I mean, the dogs, things, I get that, but like. Expecting someone to be able to, if they're riding a horse, it is a multi-use trail, my horse takes a dump while I'm going, I can't jump off a sixteen two hand horse and get back on him.